Running late, she's, I think she's on our way though. I'm gonna go ahead and start because we're on the hour at seven. All right. Call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone, Happy New Year. Karen, can we get attendance please?
Yes.
And then my remarks, it's me, I'm on. Hello everyone, thank you for joining us. I prepared a little, a little something, so I appreciate your patience. So in preparing for tonight's meeting, I looked through comments given by past board presidents going back over the last decade. In 2011, Board President Leary reflected on a number of awards given to the AADL in the previous year. A five-star ranking from the Library Journal, MLA's Trustee Citation of Merit Award for Addy Awards Literary Arts Awards at the Carytown Book Fest, Library Journal's Movers and Shakers Tech Leader, and the Friends of the Ann Arbor District Library and AADL receiving clean audits. And receiving a clean audit is a, is a reward in itself. The remainder of that January 2011 board meeting went on to discuss renewing Westgate's lease, looking at early examples of the tools collection, and formulating our website's Terms of Use policy. And here we are now in 2020, beginning a new decade with a new website, an expanded branch at Westgate, an extensive tools collection that, that allows us to make art and music, explore and understand science, repair our homes, and catch a glimpse of the universe. We also have the Secret Lab, Fifth Street Press, Pulp Magazine, the Archives, an entire season of festivals celebrating the literary, graphic, and independent arts. What's remarkable is how the AADL continues to maintain a high level of excellent programming and outreach. We are again, a five-star ranking library for the 12th year in a row. We are recognized in our city, townships, region, and nationally in ways that supports our reputation as an innovative and responsive community center. The AADL, its staff and leadership demonstrates how institutions can weather challenges without wavering from our mission as a public entity to create opportunities to learn, understand, and commune with one another. The AADL's steady path, path over the past decade is what brought most of us to this board. Over the past three years, we've kept going by exploring what our options are to maintain all of our buildings, and we've welcomed new trustees. We stand as an independent institution, ready to welcome the next decade. Thank you. I am, I'm looking forward to the work ahead. Great, sure. All right, moving on to elect library board officers. This is a roll call vote. So like a whole ballroom nominations?
Yes.
Call for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Lynn Song for president.
I would second that nomination.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote.
Discussion.
Oh, that's right. Yes. Are there any other nominations? Great, any discussion? Thank you. Should we do a roll call vote then please?
Sure. Dharma Ackman?
Yes.
Bray Green? Jim Leha?
Yes.
Yes.
Colleen Sherman? Lynn Song?
Yes, thank you.
Kimmy Van.
Yes.
Thank you. Victoria, good timing.
Would you like to vote for president?
You still have a chance.
Okay, I'm still in.
Karen, would you call for Victoria's vote? The nominee is Lynn Song for president.
Bray Green?
Yes, thank you.
My apologies, my apologies.
Thank you. Moving on, accepting nominations for vice president. I would like to nominate Kareen Moore. There, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. All right, thank you. Karen, can we have our, our roll call vote?
Dharma Ackman?
Yes.
Victoria Green?
Yes.
Jim Leha?
Yes.
Bray Moore?
Yes.
Colleen Sherman? Lynn Song?
Yes.
Louie Vanderbroek?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Moving on to treasurer. Any nominations for treasurer? I'll run the nomination, I'd like to nominate Dharma Ackman for treasurer.
Second.
Great, thank you, discussion? Thank you for reminding me about this.
The resident.
Yes.
Robert's Rules of Orders. I, I want to discuss only to ask the question, there is a, a senior member of the board, or a more senior member of the board, Victoria Green, who I know has not served in an executive role, and I, I just want to consider, you know, whether or not Victoria, you'd like a nomination, given that this is your last year of your current term, and, and open that up just for, you know, comment. We're not really allowed to discuss this otherwise, so.
So I'd just like to make a statement, which is first of all, I appreciate your vote confidence in me and thinking that my interests might align with the, the good of the board, but my perspective on this is, I got no personal skin in the game, I have every reason to think Dharma will be an excellent treasurer. So.
Thank you.
I don't think there's any point in arguing. That's my perspective.
Great, thank you for the discussion. Roll call vote.
Dharma Ackman?
So I do vote for myself.
Victoria Green?
Yes.
Jim Leha?
Yes.
Bray Moore?
Yes.
Colleen Sherman?
Yes.
Kimmy Vanderbroek?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And lastly, secretary, entertaining nominations for secretary, please.
I'd like to nominate Jim Leha.
I'll second that. I think I'm allowed to second that, right?
Would you like to lead discussion? Any other nominations? Discussion? I, I will say something, I think Jim is the longest-serving board member at this point, and has served on the executive committee. I think you've served every officer role.
Except president.
Except president.
That's right. This would be second, this would be my third.
That's, and, and you have two more years to your term.
Correct.
So there's time. There's time for Jim. And he's in, is it how many years now you've been on the board between your first six years?
Six years, yeah.
Yes, so as the most senior member of the board. I appreciate the effort and the willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Great. Karen, can we have our roll call vote please?
Dharma Ackman?
Yes.
Bray Green?
Yes.
Yes.
Bray Moore?
Yes.
Colleen Sherman?
Yes.
Kimmy Vanderbroek?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And that, with that, we have our officers, we need to do an oath, is that right?
Just sit here and say, I'm on, just sit right here and do it.
All right.
All in use, and then you're fine.
All right, ready folks?
Yes.
All right. I?
I.
Lynn Song?
I swear that I will abide by the bylaws, rules, and regulations of my office as it is best of my ability.
Thank you, thank you everyone. Congratulations, it will be an excellent year. Officers relinquish control to new officers, is that, is that just like a?
If you needed to change anything here.
We're just like gonna hand you the shovel.
You don't have to do it tonight, Norm, because you don't have specific places, so it's up, it's up to you.
I think, I think we're pretty comfortable today where we are. I can, I can still sense your presence across from there. Good, good, uh, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I am in favor, but I wanted to add one note. Which is, it is my understanding, based on the, but, or based on the, the, the agenda that we are not, that we are hearing a draft of the strategic plan proposal today.
Right.
But we are not taking an action to, the plan is not to take an action to, to vote or approve, or?
Um, I, I, I think it's on the agenda.
Is it on the agenda to approve?
Yeah, to approve.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I think there's, there's discussion from, from media reports that will, I think will inform.
Great.
The vote.
Okay, oh right, it's a new business, I got it, okay.
Yeah, and speak to some of the questions that folks have about that.
Great.
But thank you. All right, all those in, we had a second on that motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, so the motion passes. Consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
A second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great, motion passes. Moving on, citizens' comments. Karen, do we have anyone sign up for citizens' comments? Oh, right. All right, this, we do have time at the end of the meeting, so if anyone is so moved and inspired.
I would like to acknowledge, although I don't think they're gonna say a word, I would like to acknowledge three young men from Skyline High School who are here for their government class. Guys, wave, just wave.
All right.
Thank you, let's wave.
Thank you, thank you for joining us tonight. We always appreciate having students in the audience, please run for office. All right, great, moving on to financial reports, Josie.
Thank you. So you have the two months of financial reports in this packet, and they are the November, ending November, end of November, and end of December financial reports. So I want to, the thing I want to point out, and I have the advantage, I took them out, so I'm looking at the front pages of each month, where you can see the general fund balance graph, and where the change is, and you can see where the money was transferred out of the general fund into the capital, I always get it wrong, so I'm trying to make capital fund, so that you see that drop. I want to make sure everyone sees that in December financials, that you voted to do that, and then that money was transferred, so it shows up, it shows up there as a, as a dip in that graph. So you can see the fund balance activity, and that's where that is noted, in the fund balance activity. So each of these months show in the, in the summary, the revenue, the expenditures, revenue over/under, and grants and memorials. Under expenditures, and, and there's a sentence at the end of every one of these paragraphs that gives you that current view, not the accrual view, but the current view in that sentence, so that you have both here. They're not drawn out that way, pulled out that way. So actual cash receipts are at 97.45% of the budget, and actual cash expended in December is 47.53% of the budget. And that, if you look up at revenue over/under expenditures, you're getting the numbers in the accrual, which show up in the financial statement. But that last sentence is your actual. Is that helpful?
Last sentence, where, I'm sorry, that is terrible.
If you're in the financial summary, in, I'm sorry.
Page 33.
Okay, okay, thanks. I'm just showing you how we did this, to help with the understanding between the accrual summary, and then these sentences are the actuals, for those of you who've asked for that. Okay? So, I want to make sure you see that. And then, then you have the statements of revenue and expenditures in the general fund that look, the, that are the governmental accounting form, formats, I want to make sure everybody is comfortable with that. And to ask you if there are any questions, also in this, on the statement of revenues and expenditures, for each month, you have your percentage of year-to-date, it shows you where we are on the lines, and I'm looking at December, and the only place where we are well over is in accounting and auditing, and that will stay that way through the rest of this year. And at the end of the year, we'll have a vote to adjust that line, at the end of the year, when we, when we do that routinely in June. But right now, we're not seeing any indication of any lines going over budget in this budget this year, except that one, and we all understand what that's about.
And the batteries, or, no, not the batteries, that, that we're approving today, or that we approved before, that's coming out of the capital?
You, it's a capital. Tonight's resolution's capital outlay. But we didn't approve, we didn't approve a battery, we haven't had a resolution about that.
No.
No, no. You had a resolution last month about the 4-4.
Okay.
And that money is coming out of the capital fund. Tonight, Lynn's gonna talk to you about HVAC, and that's coming out of operations, that's coming out of the budget that you've approved, so.
Okay.
Because of the amount, and he'll talk to you about that, when he talks to you about that, about why.
So, Josie, I, I just want to call out one other item which is substantially different for the budget versus the actual, but it's the direction we like it, which is that we got more, way, way more interest income than we originally budgeted for this year. And I, I know we already talked about that a little bit, and the idea of whether that's a one-time or something that won't count for in the budget next year, but it is a, we got more interest income.
And that's just how things are, how things are invested?
Yeah.
And how, how well they're doing, at the, at a time, in a point in time. Any other questions or comments about the budget for me? Concerns about the summary? Thank you.
Great, thank you Josie.
Thank you.
Moving on, executive committee did not meet, I think we had a pretty productive meeting last time we met, and we didn't see a reason to really convene, especially as we're looking at the election of different officers, so I have nothing to report from executive committee. Strategic plan, strategic planning committee?
We met, was it last week? Feels like longer ago. So we met last week basically just to review the proposed document that is in front of you. We made one small change to the narrative introduction, and then we also reviewed the feedback from the staff on the, the plan, well, mostly on the values section of the plan. And that was a really positive experience, just to get a sense of how the staff feel about the values we're proposing for tonight, and the, the comments were incredible, and it was like a real pleasure to get the opportunity to read them. Like a lot of surveys that you might fill out, I think there's an expectation that you have filled out something that, you know, will not be like distributed, you know, that it won't be like posted on the internet for everyone to see, so that's, that feedback is something that the board members will be able to view, but it's not something that we're going to distribute publicly, and that's just in the interest of the privacy of the people who filled it out. But I can assure you that the, the respondents were very positive about the new values, and, and it made me feel like very proud to be associated with this organization. But otherwise, I think we're gonna cover the strategic plan in more detail in a few minutes here, and then vote on it, so unless there's something else someone wants to add from Victoria or Lynn?
I just, I just, I was really struck by the staff survey results, and how quickly they responded, I think it was right before the holiday, so that's, I think we were, we were a little worried, and, and staff really came through, and were really thoughtful, like, and it's, I think very few people actually like taking surveys, so I appreciated their candid responses, and, and I, I feel, I feel like this, the strategic plan is, is informed by what staff would like to see, and it was exciting. I don't know, Victoria, you had some thoughts, do you have any thoughts?
I mean, I can add to that, in that I was overwhelmed with gratitude at how engaged the staff were, and the things that, that staff are living, that we're writing on pieces of paper, and how that speaks to the health of the organization. I'm trying to think if there's anything else operationally we did as a committee, but I think your summary was accurate, and we're gonna discuss the plan in more detail.
Great. Thank you, thank you for making sure we actually met. Oh, I mean, thank Karen for that. Yes, thank you Karen for organizing us. Great, anything else, any other, anything else to report out for strategic, okay, planning, thank you. Moving on to Josie, director's report, please.
Thank you. So in front of you are, is a photograph of Trevor Wood, and where the new bookable meeting room will be. It's just to the west of the existing computer lab, computer lab, if you're familiar with Trevor Wood. And behind it, on, that wall behind is staff wall, on the other side is staff lounge, south area, so that's Trevor Wood. And this, these are some photographs that were in local media about the voting machine project study that was held here over the summer, and we were very happy to do it, and I sent you the study results, so that you could see what happened, I sent you the URL for the study results. We were very happy about this, and people flocked, they, they didn't have any problems signing up, stepping in line, waiting to do this, so it was a good, a good study to see how people vote, what makes sense, electronic voting, and what doesn't. Glad to be a part of it. We are, as far as we know, the only satellite caucus site for the Iowa caucus in Michigan, and it will be February 3rd at 7:00 PM down here in the free space, so if you're interested in being part of the Iowa caucus as a satellite site, these are for people who live here, who are Iowans, who can't vote in Iowa because they're not there, and they want to be a part of it. Am I correct? I got it right? Right? So they're here, and we'll see how many Iowans there are who are gonna show up at the AADL, so it should be fun, Iowa night, and that's coming up, so. This is 4-4 meeting room construction, this is the curtain wall that's been put up, that blocks off people now from the area of construction, that's the atrium, that, that used to be the walkway area to the boardroom doors, to the big boardroom doors. Downtown coffee bar, RFP was sent out 13th to 19, operators of coffee shops in Washtenaw County, responses are due back on the 14th of February. I've had one phone call for clarification, information today, which was nice. So we're showing you where it will be, you know, on the corner of the building at, at Fifth and William, somehow or the other, we'll work this out with a, with a window, walk-up window, taking advantage of the bike lane traffic, so it will be in what, we'll move the books, the materials that are in that corner, and take out the walls that were the old drop box, to make space for this. And if I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, I'm looking at Lynn and Eli, we would begin this in the fall, yeah, so it would not happen this summer, because too busy a time for us, too much going on, so.
So is the space considerably smaller than Sweetwater's at Westgate, then?
Much smaller. Much smaller. Yep, much smaller. So, much smaller. It's part of the whole walk-up window idea.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. So, um, Chef Keegan has been hosting cooking and baking events at ADL for years, but earlier in the month, he covered what he knows best, the art of bread making. And it led to newfound respect for croissants and some seriously delicious-looking loaves and all the feedback. Whopper, the Washtenaw Pickup Robotics High School Robotics Competition was a great time. And it featured teams from throughout Washtenaw County playing robot volleyball. And these are a few photos from this event. And this was held at the U of M Sports Coliseum. It, we are, this building can't do it. It did it once, we won't ask it to do that again.
That was fun, though.
It was very fun.
With a lot happening in one day.
But whoa, was it intense, so we won't be doing that again. And it wasn't so much about the noise, it just was about the space, meaning the space. Um, the ADL and the North Coast Modular Collective have been partnering on music events. And a January hands-on event welcomed more than seventy-five people into, who took part in demos and tried their hands at DJing, sound editing, and more. And if I, I'm looking at that picture, is that the Secret Lab Annex?
No, it's just the secret.
It's just Secret Lab, okay, okay. I, I love this one because I'm one of the fans of the Bernoulli exhibit at Pittsfield. This is a young man from twenty-ten to twenty-nineteen standing at the Bernoulli in Pittsfield. So, through one, through the life, the growing up of one fellow. And I will say, I don't know how old he was in ten, but Pittsfield opened in six. So, he was probably an infant. I mean, I don't know how old he is there. If he's two or three, he wasn't born yet, but, oh, anyway, I loved it. I thought it was great. This one is two, two feel-good messages, so you can read them for yourself. So, shout out to the woman in front of me. She's checking out what's like twenty-five books. This is the vibe I want to bring into twenty-twenty of well-read women. And then the other one is, and thanks to the ADL Westgate branch for organizing the kids' section by category. Makes it so much easier when my daughter wants only cat books and dragon books, including the one about the dragon who takes care of the cat. We, and everyone who works here is laughing because they've had that question. This one is, um, special. Lori Damon May posted a request on the Ann Arbor Townies Facebook page asking for help tracking down newspaper articles about her grandfather Everett Fox, who's pictured here, who owned a small grocery store in Ann Arbor and was a school crossing guard who was hit by a car running a red light in nineteen sixty-nine. ADL staff are helpful, no matter where people ask for help. And Eric Kloster, who's here tonight, who's the father of one of these young men and did not know we were going to do this, was quick to offer our help and involve the Archives team and Darla Welshens. The Archives team found and digitized a number of photos and articles related to Mr. Fox, including coverage of his recuperation after being hit by that car, a photo of him receiving a certificate of appreciation for his service to the city in nineteen sadly, and then sadly, his obituary in nineteen seventy-one. And we do know his death was not related to this accident. Mr. Fox's granddaughter was overjoyed that the ADL was able to provide information about her family, and we, as always, were happy to help. Thank you, Eric. And finally, of the comments, in early December, someone decided to wade back into the, who actually uses libraries these days question? And despite the library skeptics residing in the village of Collingworth in West Yorkshire, England, he heard from plenty of folks who love the ADL. So, you're getting the list here. Quite a few. Quite a few. And finally, Lynn's already mentioned it, but for twelve years in a row, for a dozen years, the ADL is a five-star library, from Library of Journals, five-star, stars library. I, um, I want to thank all the staff who make it possible. It's about who comes, it's about what they do, it's about using the library. It's not about how much money we spend, or how many people work here, or how many buildings we have. It's about the public coming in, and the public coming through the website, the public using our services. And that we provide them in the way we do makes that possible. And it's a shout-out to every single person who's, who's worked here this year and the last twelve. I'd also like to take this opportunity to congratulate. West Bloomfield Library is also a five-star, as well as Richland Community. It's the second year in a row Richland has been a five-star library. Kent District is a four-star. Hopkins District, which is on the west side of the state, south of Holland but north of Lansing, between ninety-six and ninety-four, is a four-star. Kalamazoo District Library is a three-star. And Lynchville, which is in the southwest part of the state, near Jonesville, is a three-star. And I think Lynchville, if I'm not mistaken, was Library of the Year a number of years ago. And so, in Michigan, for different things they were trying to do. So, I'm very proud to be, we're very proud for ADL to be a part of the list of this many libraries in Michigan with stars. I don't know that it's been, the list has been this long. And I'm very happy about, about this. So, thank you. Just, I'm very happy, a dozen years, to be at the, in the five-star list.
Congratulations, Josie.
Yeah.
And everyone.
I made a comment on, online that, um, twelve years completes, uh, a full, um, Asian, uh, Asian lunar near Zodiac cycle?
Whoa.
Uh, that means, I think it's supposed to mean it'll bring you luck.
That's good. I'll tell you, that's, that's perfect.
So, it's quite an accomplishment. Thank you, thank you to everyone.
Great, uh, moving on to the, um, with the agenda, old business. Um, we have a presentation on the draft of the twenty-twenty strategic plan with Carrie Sheldon and Anika Medea from Bridgeport. Is Anika here?
She is not. We arm wrestled for the honor of coming tonight, and I won because I've been working out. So, uh, it's such a pleasure to be here today, and thank you so much for, um, for the opportunity to work with the library, for all the reasons that you just covered in Josie's beautiful director's report and more. It is both fun and exciting and inspiring, and we always learn when we work with you on preparing the strategic plan. So, I thought I would just offer a few comments to kind of get us grounded in how did we get to this point, where did we come from, how did we get here? What's before you tonight? Um, and why? Why we arrived where we arrived? So, and I, I admit, I needed to cast my own mind back and flip through the file and sort of where did we start and how did we? So, I refreshed my memory so you wouldn't have to, and I'll just narrate some of the milestones. As, as you recall, um, really last spring is when we got the call from Josie and said, my goodness, what do you know, our strategic plan is sort of at the end of its term. And it felt like it'd been, you know, ten minutes, but we were like, holy smokes, it's been three years. So, we came back and we're delighted to do that, and, um, always happy for the opportunity. And so, we began, as we often do, with individual interviews with each of you, just to develop a current understanding of the landscape, interests, needs. There had been change in the board since the last time we did strategic planning, so it was really important and helpful for us to get to know who's, who's with us, who are our traveling companions. We convened the strategic planning committee, uh, who then met with us regularly, were very patient with us, and, and with the skillful help of Karen, to find time on people's calendars, Lynn and Jamie and Victoria were really useful sounding boards as we gathered data and brought it back to talk about what it meant. Um, Anika facilitated the board retreat in May, in spring, to talk about, okay, so where are we, what are we looking for, what have we accomplished and we're ready to set aside? And how do we set our sights for the future? And one of the themes of that conversation is really the patron experience, thinking about the library as a place where people come and people use the library, and how do we want to, um, be responsive to that moving into the future? Also worked with the management team. There were some kind of, sort of emerging focal areas and thoughts, themes that arose both from the interviews and from the board retreat. And just briefly, I would name them as, um, you know, one of the questions we asked was, what do you want this strategic plan to do for you? Is it, you know, the last time it was a pretty operational strategic plan? It was almost, you know, we joked, but, and it, but it was close to things that you could kind of check off the list, and it gave you an implementation timeline and things you wanted to do. And what we heard resoundingly from the board, um, was we need it to be a little bit different altitude this time. We want something that we won't turn around and say, oh, my gosh, it feels like it's been ten minutes, but it's been three years, and the strategic plan is now at the end of its term. We want something that'll be a little bit more resilient, um, not necessarily tell us exactly how we're, what decisions we're going to make in the next eighteen months, um, but really give a stronger guidepost for how we will make those decisions. And, and a lot of that, you know, I'm sort of doing a spoiler for Josie's letter, which really clearly lays out what the document is and is not. Um, and I'll get to that in just a minute. So, we wanted to test out that philosophy, that theory with the management team and say, does that give you what you need in order to operate the, the library? And they, um, just about burst with joy and said, yes, please, that would be great. And they were really grateful for the trust that the board has in them, um, for stewarding the operational aspects of the library. And they were warmly embracing the idea that it could be, you know, something a little bit higher level. So, that, so we started to move on that, started drafting in the summertime. We really focused on the values because there was a sense that the values, as they were articulated in the existing strategic plan, which had been, you know, the same values as they had been for going on fifteen-ish years. And there was a sense that while the concepts embedded in those values still remain true, and we felt them and lived them every day, the language could be updated. And we kind of wanted to just take the time to look at that and make sure that we're, they're truing it up for the times. Um, and so, that's where we focused. And from there, we really, we discussed, you know, we started putting drafts together, putting them before the strategic planning committee, sitting with the management team once we thought that we had it mostly right, and really wordsmithing, discussing what each word meant. Because if you want it to be brief and you want it to be high-level, you have to be careful with the high-level, brief words that you're using. And so, I thought a lot of really rich discussion came out of those conversations. Um, it was very helpful. So, we tested that out with the management team, and that was part of where we started to get the sense, oh, my gosh, there are so many great stories here. Because people could immediately say, this is what welcoming means to me. This is what adaptable means to me. And here's how we practice it every day, here's how we see it on the front lines at all of our branches. So, we got our words around it and felt good in, in what they said. Um, and launched the staff survey, it was shortly before the holidays. And so, the two things that you have before you tonight, this sort of brings us to current day, um, are the, um, I believe there was like a high-level summary of what the staff survey results said, hugely positive. A few people have spoken to this already, immediate response, seventy-five people took the time, and they were open-ended questions. And so, you know, people took the time to often write a paragraph or so of really what these values mean to them, how they resonate, strongly positive. And then the second document that you have is the actual strategic plan itself. So, just a few words about that, couple highlights just to kind of focus our attention. Josie's letter kind of says it all in terms of what the, what the document is and what it is not. And I mentioned that already. And that's sort of what it is, is those values. It's a statement of belief for the library. And, you know, I've heard, uh, we've mentioned the term in previous strategic plannings and in the current one, that we really want to understand what the secret sauce is. And it's often been phrased as Josie's secret sauce, leadership's secret sauce. And what we learned through this process that was so invigorating was that it is not Josie or Eli's or the leaders of the management team's secret sauce. It is AADL secret soft, secret sauce. It permeates the library. So, we wanted to document that and articulate that. And that's really the substance of what the strategic plan is this time. It's the context that you're working within, you know, major trends, major influences that you have been responsive to and anticipate that there will, those will continue, and there will be new ones. And what will we hold true to, what do we believe in that will guide us into the future? And so, that's the substance of the document. Um, it does provide that flexibility, not knowing what the next major trend is, not knowing, um, the particular and specific decisions that will confront you in the years to come. How will we arrive at those decisions and what, what will we be guided by? So, the plan itself is deliberately, intentionally not time-bound. You know, we often say, we, on the title, you know, twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three would be a very traditional way to present a strategic plan. And this one will just say, adopted or published, you know, January twenty-first, should you adopt it tonight, twenty-twenty. And then it will guide you until it doesn't guide you anymore. And you'll know when that happens, when it happens. Um, it really just lays claim to what's important to ADL moving forward and sets you up to have that common foundation as leadership changes and as boards change and elections happen, to know what's true for the library and what we believe to be true into the future. So, with that very brief, but I hope sort of at least a narration of how we got here and what, what is before you tonight, I am very happy to welcome additional questions, reactions, concerns that you might have.
Is there any way that we could pull up the page of the draft on what defines us? Because of what the vision and mission? Is there only, because I, you know, we, I, I think for folks who are, um, I know we have faithful viewers on YouTube, who are, probably already have the board packet and are following along, but with the students here, um, if you don't already have the packet, or you do, they have a copy, it was up here, okay.
Page nine.
Yeah. Um, that might be, okay, so there's copies on the side there. If you happen to grab the strategic plan, I want to follow a little bit along. Thank you. Um, only because, uh, I think like the bulk, it seems like the bulk of the work was really focusing on, uh, the page that says what defines us. Um, and then everything else kind of flowed from, from there.
Definitely.
Right?
And if helpful, while we're pulling it up, I can also just read it. They're brief enough.
Yeah.
Due to how careful we were, that we could just read them out. And sometimes it also lands differently when you hear it, um, audibly. So, I'll start with the values because the mid, the vision and mission statements remain the same. So, the values that, uh, that came out of the original value, or the most recent values and now are present in the strategic plan are welcoming. Everything we do is designed to create an exceptionally welcoming patron experience. Equitable. We work to dismantle barriers to opportunity so everyone can take full advantage of what ADL has to offer. Open. We are fierce protectors of intellectual freedom and individual choice. Responsible. We are careful stewards of resources, recognizing our central directive to advance the public good. And adaptive. We honor our history while remaining nimble, creative, and flexible to respond to our patrons' interests.
Thank you. I think that helps us. I kind of, kind of get a sense of where we're really coming from. This is the center point, the center point of what we're trying to do, um, how things, what hasn't changed and what has changed. Um, are there any questions for Carrie or any thoughts about? I really like the choice of this picture with the dinosaur.
I owe that to Rich. Send, send me lively pictures. And we got a dragon, speaking of dragons and cats.
Oh, right.
And I would also invite, you know, some of the debates around the particular words, you know, I don't want to step in front of the strategic planning committee to also talk a little bit about why this word, not that one, what do we mean by?
So, so what I would say about it, about any kind of document like this, is you're never done with wordsmithing, and it's some, you're never going to get everybody in the room to agree to every single word. And sooner or later, it's just time to go. That's how I felt about it. And that, we could have like sat there and done ten more drafts and changed five words, and the likely impact of that isn't small. So, I think we did plenty of refining, um, and that's my take on it.
Yeah, I mean, these are, these are very different than the values that we started with when we were having discussions. So, I feel really good about like the productiveness of our discussions of the, you know, you're working with the management team and the staff to understand how they felt about things, uh, interviewing us about how we felt about the present values of the library, or, you know, what, what could be considered a value in the future. Um, and I, I feel really good about what you've come up with.
And then the retreat, too. So, this is also based, using feedback from.
Right.
Retreat.
Right.
So, I wonder, for the people who didn't travel the wordsmithing path with us, how did this document read to you?
I mean, I think that, so we had values that, like you said, still resonated with people in a lot of ways, but they, they were due to be updated and refreshed and to really reflect the organization as it presently operates. And I think that the values that, that you and Anika initially brought to us, like to me, they, they didn't, I feel awkward saying this in such a public forum.
You can say it.
They did not hit the mark. I think they didn't, they didn't represent the ADL that I know.
Yeah.
Uh, but sometimes it's hard for me to know that if the ADL that I know is the same ADL that everyone else knows. So, we had a productive discussion about that. Um, because I think to me, I sometimes have to like remember that this place has grown and changed and evolved a lot since I worked here. And that like sometimes if something doesn't seem right to me, like I might be like projecting too much of my own past history into it and not thinking enough about what the organization is like now. So I think what we arrived at is like, it very well reflects the organization that I think I know now. Even checking myself for like that bias that I was mentioning and seeing the staff feedback. To me, the thing that really hit the money for me about the staff feedback was that so many people didn't say, this is what I do, or this is how I enact these values. To me, like it was pervasive, that people would be like, this is how I see my coworkers doing this, or I witnessed this. I watch my coworkers do this every day. And that was really moving, it was very like much focused on like the staff as a community of people that do something together. It was not, yeah, so it caught me off guard, like how emotional we all were, but like how just like the people who work here, I mean, man, we're a very lucky community. So I, I think we've evolved, like the words have evolved to match what I think represents the values of this organization. But I'm interested in, you know, like you said, the others, the Dharma and Jim and Karine.
I think it's very powerful, especially the values and how brief they are and how encapsulating it is for everybody. Probably who takes a minute to read them, it's really powerful.
Yeah, especially because I can remember the discussion, I think you and I were in it, and I remember especially about the open one, the wordsmithing, and now everything feels very succinct, and I don't wonder at all what it's about.
Yes.
So I think it's good.
Yeah, I mean, I have a very positive response to this part of the plan. It all, you know, it feels very realized in the sense of what the, what the, what the culture feels like to me, or like what the aspiration for the culture is, is like here.
There can be a fine line between wanting to steward resources responsibly and like having kind of a parental attitude about them. And I think that, like where we arrived here more accurately reflects the way that resources are stewarded by this organization. And maybe where we were headed initially was a little bit more like prescriptive. And I think that that is not a word I would ever use to describe what goes on here.
And I think that's a fair characterization of the feedback that we got, the first round of the draft values that we put in front. It was a little too specific, it was a little bit too.
Political, I remember saying that it was almost partisan.
Yeah, taking a stand.
Yeah, it's no longer partisan, so to speak.
Yeah, yep.
So I'm hearing support from everyone for these values in the strategic plan.
And I like how it's laid out too, so if you, if you looked at the entirety of the document, how it goes from, you know, we had talked about giving an overview, a reflection of the community that we serve and the challenges that the community faces. And the role that the library can or already does play in, in meeting these challenges. I mean, I like how we cover income inequality, social isolation, the digital revolution. So it's not just one thing that's hovering on the horizon, right, where it's, it's not, I don't know, Y two K. You know, I mean, things happen, you know, where there's, there's just, you know, to, I, I like how we're, we're not preparing for like this inevitable, like hovering darkness or anything, right? I think it's a really hopeful, I mean, there's, there's serious challenges that our community is experiencing. And there's definitely a role for us to, to help address them. And so I like the breadth of, of the strategic plan. And I like how it leads to the values, the vision, mission and values, so it's not like these, this is at the very, this is at the cover. It's like a story that kind of progresses towards it. So I hope that helps make sense to folks who are following along, I think that was the intention. Yes, maybe.
So I hope I'm not jumping ahead or not quite getting this, but just in terms of how this gets enacted, and maybe this is a question for Josie. You know, I know we deliberately kept it high level, but still as a guiding document, how do you see it being actualized and?
When you, when we look at it and the staff looks at it and the few people who've had a chance, and I know we'll have a lot more discussion about it now that it's generally seen, I get a lot of recommendations about how to, how to enact it, where to work through it. And I can give you an example of something that fits this, it came, it's come our way this week. And I have a, actually have a meeting Friday. The county is trying to put together mental health first aid throughout the community. And they've, they've identified public libraries as a place to, again, discuss that, how that happens, where that can happen, where the structure is already in place and where the knowledge is within the staff. And they've asked us to work with them before it's launched to talk about what that looks like and how that might happen. That gets to your, some of your major issues here with poverty, people who are living in isolation, and how at the public library we can help people get what they need and know where to go to get what they need. And one of the, one of the examples, I mean, we're talking here about other ways we can do some of the things we do and support the work of others in the community who are also really strategically working along the same lines. And so it's not seeing the library as the book warehouse. It's seeing the library as a partner, a true partner in the community through this plan to do some of this. And so it's, what would you take it is, that's, that's one level, but there's also the arts and theater and craft and fun and dinosaur camp, and that all that can happen here and all that can happen within this plan. So I'm going roundabout about it, but I, I have, I have no trouble seeing the library enact this plan in my head, knowing who I have working here and how they'll go about this. And I just gave you an example of an opportunity that's come to us because of what we already do by people who do something for a living that we actually don't do for a living, but they recognize we definitely have an impact on what they do. And so we're going to bring those two things together and see if we can't do more to help people in the community with, with that mental health challenges. That help answer that question?
Yeah.
You know, it's also interesting though, as you said that, I realized reading through this and, you know, not once do we mention information, materials, books. I mean.
It's in the mission.
It's in the mission.
It's in the mission. At the highest level.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I forgot about that.
None of that's going away, right? I mean, and the point is it doesn't have to.
Yeah.
So, and we don't want it to.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But they're underlying values, yeah.
So I just want to add one thing to what you said, Darra, which is, I thought it was a great question to ask Josie about how the staff and the AADL will enact the, and make a living document in effect, the strategic plan. The other question, of course, is how will we do that? Right, I mean, these are also our guiding principles when we have decisions that are brought to us. That's not to say that there isn't going to be, or even when we decide what to spend our time on, right? And that's not to say that something isn't going to come up that isn't covered in the strategic plan, right? I mean, this is not supposed to say, don't do anything that isn't specifically mentioned here. But these, this is a document we all have to be comfortable also ourselves enacting.
Well, and also like, how do you keep these at the forefront so we don't forget? And I mean, even as a board, probably even more so as a board, because we don't come together as much as you all do as a staff. But like, how can we make sure that we remember?
Well, as treasurer. That's where you'll be enacting it and leading that committee.
I'll just tattoo them right here.
Please.
I have, I'm struggling conceptually with something. And maybe two things. And I'm not sure which to address first. So one is that this is even less specific than I imagined it would be. And it feels very uncomfortable to me in that way and very different in the sense that it does, it doesn't prescribe, you know, specific measures of accountability and success. And I am willing to lean into that given that I have a very high level of trust in, you know, our current leadership and staff here. But I do think, Josie, it means that the onus falls even more heavily on you to define what the measures of success are in very, very specific ways as we move through the plan. I also do just want to say that on the flip side of a coin where there's very little prescribed in the plan, that there's a vulnerability for all of you when the board changes and there are others here that might want something different. So I'm making that statement. And we can discuss it, that's the first thing. I am, I am fundamentally, I think, I, I really struggling with the language on page five related to a shift conceptually from thinking about groups to addressing the individual. As someone who thinks like a sociologist, I, and believes that really, you know, social change and impact really come on the group level and actually don't necessarily operate on the individual level as productively. This is a really difficult conceptual shift for me to sign on for, speaking specifically about paragraph three, which is rather than name populations and so on.
Which we've done before, like naming seniors and youth.
Yes. So there, and I, there are also a couple of words in here that are, that I will say are really complicated, and they are novelty and innovation. I've been part of the nonprofit sector for most of my career and went through a period where funders wanted to fund novelty and innovation, which had to do almost exclusively with technological innovation. It was code for the internet essentially and social media and web two point O. And that shift in funding was, I, I also think came at the expense of conversations about accessibility for very specific groups of people. And we have entered back into a funding mode in the nonprofit sector that is now focused very specifically on questions of accessibility and equity. If you, like me, believe that things like social economic inequality are real and racism is real, I do believe that that has to be sort of addressed and dealt with on the group level as well as the individual level. And especially as an institution that moves a lot of resources and groups through its, you know, through its doors and through its books.
And partnerships.
And partnerships. I, I feel squeamish about this and.
I don't think that was the intent.
I actually feel really strongly, so I'd like to speak in a second if you have.
Yeah, so that's, that is my, that's kind of, this landed on me very strangely. I also want to, you know, I also want to say that like, I am reviewing this language with a very, you know, very limited time to actually sit and ponder and think about it. I have, I've been, I had, I received this language like twenty-six hours ago. So I haven't had a whole lot of time to really absorb the nuance of it.
Was this in the board packet?
No, it came out.
Yeah.
We had it because we were in the committee.
Right, so I would say like that this plan is as much a standalone document as it is the evolution of every strategic plan that this library has ever had, because they sort of feed into each other. And if you and I watched in the last strategic plan, this library, the force-fed, specific things that they needed to focus on, specifically seniors and youth that I watched as an employee, everyone already focused on for, you know, intensely. So that to me felt like really, well, it was hard to watch because I know this library already cares about people a lot. And one of the things I think this library does that is especially unusual, but also fabulous, is that every program is for anyone. You know, like if I am interested in making a duct tape wallet, which was the thing when I was an employee, like I could go do that even though I'm not sixteen. And so I think that's one of the things that like the kernel of that expanded into what this library does now. And so that, I think that when you see individuals there, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about this library being for, and libraries in general, I think, are for individuals. Like every person who goes into a library gets to do whatever they want in the library and use whichever resources they want. And they don't have to experience the library as part of a larger group. So I think it's like that lack of prescriptivism where that's how I see that phrase landing. I can understand it feeling differently to you, like when you read it. But this is how I feel when I read it, and like hearing you critique it made me feel strongly. That's what I'd like to say.
I, I mean, I, I think this is complicated, this is a very, this is a very like, but it's also like a wholesale idea which says, we used to think about groups and now we're going to think about individuals. And I just don't think it's that clear-cut. And I, I totally agree with you, I'm not interested actually in prescribing. And in fact, like I want the staff to really think about, like what are the bridges that really need to be built? And I think they do that, a lot of that every day. And I, I fundamentally, as someone who is a programmer, like in my professional life, you know, I mean, the idea that you design for everyone is often a stand-in, that you design for people who are predominantly white and middle-class and are, you know, avatars for people who can get here, that have the means to be here, the time to be here, the resources to be here. And I don't think we mean that when we say everyone.
No, 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 and I don't think that's what's going on here.
And that's, that's why I'm scratching at it.
Yeah, I feel that.
So I, what I, what I suspect is that you two actually agree.
Yes, we do.
And I suspect it's, that everyone agrees within the library. And that this is more of a language issue than an actual what direction should the library be going? And that makes me want to fix the language. So I, I can't fix, I can't fix the language on the fly, I think that the only way to do that is to delay.
Right, because I mean, it's still, it's still, still on the agenda for, for a vote.
But you don't have to take it.
Right.
Yeah.
Or we cannot adopt it and adopt it next month.
Well, let's continue this discussion a little bit more, any other?
I, I agree with Jim, I think that there's, I think that it spoke so much to the shortcomings of the prior strategic plans that, you know, it almost felt negative. Like we are not doing that, that we forget about the positive things and the fact that we do focus on those things and we do care about those things already. You know, it was, it's just, it's a little bit too negative, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like we, we know what was wrong with the, you know, prior plans, and it's good that, you know, we've articulated that. But there's a way to, you know, refocus on the positive, you know, and still embrace the things that we do, you know, agree on and care about, you know, without making, you know, the valuable things about those, you know, about minorities, for example, you know, without making groups feel like they're being thrown under the bus. Because we're refocusing on the individual, right, it, it can come off wrong. And, and again, we, we didn't only have twenty-six hours to look at it, so I don't think there's anything wrong with tabling it, and I, I understand that you guys have really worked hard on this. And I, I don't want to be that person.
No, I think like, we can take it.
Yeah.
But I'm curious if Carrie has anything to, I mean.
Yeah.
Carrie always has something good to say.
I can solve this, no, I'm just kidding. So I, I want to express appreciation for what you're saying first and foremost, because I think that this was a topic of really rich discussion throughout the process, and apologies that there was a short timeframe for you to kind of process and get up to speed. You know, that was probably too high of an expectation. Just to narrate some of the discussion points that we had with the strategic planning committee was part of, it, it was more than a reaction to, well, we don't want to focus on seniors and teens this time, which were two sort of demographic groups that were identified last time.
We always focus on seniors and teens, I just, I just want to make sure we all know that.
There's, and that was sort of the recognition of, there's no need to name groups. And that was sort of the recognition of, there's no need to name groups in the plan. In part because, you know, we don't want, and I heard this term, we don't want groups of people to feel hunted. Like there's a, you know, you, you, the person who looks this way or a person who came to this one thing. Can you speak on behalf of an entire group of people that that's not what the library is here to do? And that there is this really strong heartfelt. Attachment to the idea of we are here for everyone and you can take, we're not going to tell you what you should or could take. We're, we're not, you know, in terms of classes or participating in events, we're not going to tell you what books you can or cannot check out. That's totally not our role. And so that was more the flavor of the discussion about the transition away from thinking about groups, which felt a little paternalistic and a little bit. Homogenous, um, thinking of all the particip- or all the people who belong to a group being of that group. And so that was really the emphasis of the choice of language. It's not to say, I mean, and Josie and Eli and others could speak to this more, I don't want to speak on behalf of staff and leadership. It's not to say that you won't do certain things for groups of people who want to affiliate as a group and want to come to the library and say. You know, I have a group of people and we were interested in this and that. It's not that the library would refuse to be responsive. To that or, or would refuse to seek. You know, to seek to learn the interests of different groups in the community. It's that the strategic plan itself would not name them because as soon as you name them. A, you're probably already doing work for them and you probably already have. Um, a lot of programs that would be appealing to many members of that group of people, however you're defining it. So it leaves that flexibility on the implementation on the ground. And I totally, and I, no pride of authorship, you, you know, we don't take it personally, it's language and these are really good. You know, ideas that we, that are important to talk about before you adopt them, so please don't feel like anybody's offended. It's perfectly fine to debate the language.
I think for just addressing things in different ways and different parts of the, of the plan, I mean, we, one of the values is, you know, speaking to being equitable. That our work is equitable. So um, if, if it's a matter of just kind of. Adding a, a little bit more context behind that than, you know, and trustees feel that that's.
I just feel like uh, in that, what is it, third paragraph that Jim cited. And there's sort of one half of a sentence that says, in addition to supporting the tried and true portfolio of beloved programs. I mean, there's a lot of uh, programs that we do here that are uh, focused on certain demographics. That are amazing and wonderful. And it's almost like we, you are just like, yeah, yeah, and that's all, you know. They're beloved, you know, but they are a big part of what makes this library so welcoming and. The, the paragraph is too powerfully negative. Uh, you know what I mean? Uh, that's all. We, we all love individuals too, and so I get that and, and we can give them their say, but uh, we don't want to, you know.
Diminish.
We, we are doing great work in that area and, you know, you wouldn't know it from reading that paragraph.
So I don't want to speak for Lynn on this, but personally, I think one of the things that has changed the most about the board. You know, honestly, Jim, since you've come on, is that we have honest and open discussions like this all the time that are videotaped and like. I, it doesn't bother me that, I'm happy to have these discussions publicly with you. Like, so I think it would be fine to like take this important and substantive feedback. Refine this a little bit more and vote on it next month.
This has been very helpful just to understand the sort of, how much of that is a re- actually like framing it as a reaction to what came before. Because of course I have the memory of that. And, and also to be reminded in the conver- and within the conversation that we. We talk about work with groups here like joyously all the time. And so we keep, it just doesn't feel right to me to make such like a hard laugh on that.
Yeah, I understand.
And I will say there's a tiny bit of irony in talking about social isolation. And then saying, the individual is like the best thing, right? So like, I want to find the both and here, that, and I don't think it's very far away.
No, I hear you.
And I'm hearing people like.
I don't think it's articulated the way that you intended. That's what I think.
It's a language problem.
And it's important, the fresh perspective that, you know.
I also think that like um, we can let that past go and it's easier to do that when you all see it without carrying that past. And are like, why are you being negative? It's like happiness here, people, happiness. Way that we used to do things. I'm like, so I think that like, no one else knows, needs to like have that be so present probably.
Can you say more about the, I was looking, you were talking about the concern with words like innovation and what was the other one? And I pers- I didn't see that in here as I was flipping through. Can you just say more about?
It's the same paragraph. Like the fourth or fifth line, uh, push the boundaries in terms of novelty and innovation. Which I think are, you know, frankly, I think are important wo- words um, still. But I liked, I, I personally like them to like sort of live alongside words like inclusivity and like social bonding. Or like, you know, like it, that um, there are. That being the most, being novel isn't necessarily always the most important thing, that, that like, you know, being welcoming and. You know, like all the other, the values that go along with it. It was just such a, and, and I think, I, I, I don't mind if those words stay in. But I just, they're, they're like, you know, slight trigger words for me in the context of the work that I do.
And I, I think they weren't for me. For me, it was tools and robots and, you know, the events that we do, I don't. And I could, I can totally see how it was a trigger for you, but for me it was actually, but that is what we do. We do a lot of things that other libraries don't.
That's right.
We do novelty programs like Paint with Bob Ross.
Right, and not technical, you know, internet oriented, digitized, it, you know, so I didn't, but I can see how you.
I know.
I feel you. I mean, I'm an art librarian who works in a tech center. And like, yeah, I, I feel that. I think that we could address that.
I also, I, I personally succumb to those words in very specific ways of the course of my work and I feel like I have to, like, I am also responsible for repairing. Damage that I contributed to by getting behind some of the things that those words did and have done and still do. I think that's important, but the, I, the other thing I just want to say is that I, the one, the, the, the big thing about this, not the one thing, the big thing about this is that there's. It does take an extraordinary amount of work to reach such a kind of elegant, straightforward. Piece of, of planning and writing. And so I'm just very appreciative of that. And I like, love coming in at eleven fifty five P M and just like, you know, burning the house down.
It's just one paragraph. Well, let's do this. Can we talk a little bit about uh, the, the process? So we're. Work, if we, we consider tabling this for a vote for approval next month, there's also the issue of. When we initially had gone through, um, when we had introduced the idea of doing, working through the strategic plan. There was an element of community input and this was a, uh, this is a comment that we had received over email. So can we just kind of walk back a little bit where we, we had. Uh, welcome community input and then what happens after board approval? Do you want to take that, Jamie?
Yeah, well, of course, we welcome community input every board meeting. And we have discussed the strategic plan um, throughout the year. Um, at each, almost every board meeting. Um, we also held a retreat in, oh my gosh, I feel like a zombie, May, thank you. In a month of the year. Um, and that board uh, retreat was specifically scheduled um, this year and in. The most recent past to be a little bit more friendly to people who work during the day and aren't able to. Um, to come to things like that at their leisure. So we also um, took feedback. Uh, there were only a few people who took us up on attending such a meeting, but those were a couple of the ways that we received feedback over the course of this process.
So, so I agree that that's sort of how we approached it and that it was a little bit front loaded, maybe some of that engagement. And I wonder if now that we have a draft, if there's a way to um, frankly, I, I'm not sure. I, a, a way to give people the opportunity to, to see the draft and to give us comments so that if we um. We, we have it on the backend too, in addition to the front.
I have. I think if we, I mean, we can also invite uh, public comments and, you know, suggestions as we implement it. You know, I mean, this is such a vague, I mean, we've got specific ideals, but like, and to actually actualize it. Like given how, you know, Josie's example of um, working with accounting and mental health issues, you know, then maybe there are other ideas that will pop up in the community too. So I mean, that's, I don't think this is prescriptive, so, uh, you know, where, where it would block any additional comments or. Participation after we vote on it, whether it's the whole year ahead of us or however long it will take to implement this. Until, you know, uh, the board decides to go undergo this process again. So there's, there's, there's unwritten opportunity, I think. As we roll this, actually roll this out.
So I, I agree with you Lynn, and I would also say that this is a better plan for the library at this moment than what is the current plan? So that's the cost of delay. It's like, this is clearly better than what we are currently operating under for, for this moment and this board. And our patrons and our community. Um, but given that I think we, I, I believe that we are trending most likely towards not. Uh, accepting this as done at this moment. I, can someone remind me how it'll be publicized as part of this meeting? Is it part of our board packet? Is it only visible sort of the way to, to people in the larger community through what we're showing on the screen or is it an attachment to the meeting itself?
The document will be attached to the page for the meeting.
So maybe we could at least invite people or publicize that fact to some extent to get any feedback. It's something as simple as if you have comments on it or um, want to take the time to review it before it is officially adopted.
You can email staff, uh, give public comments before the next meeting. Give public comments at the end of this meeting if anyone wants to, if they're so moved again.
Any downside to doing this?
Oh, no, I mean, given how vigorous the discussion has been and how, how strong folks are, are, you know, the viewpoints are. I think it's, I think it's worth revisiting next month. So um, Karen, can you remind us how we can? We need a vote to. Yes, um.
Do we do that now or do we do it when we get to?
It's under new business.
It's under new business. So we should wait to do it.
Yeah, because we're still under old business.
I have a proposal. Let's leave it as is and let's just all say no.
Accurate, I know.
I think that would technically work, but that's, that's overly negative.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think it's, we're, we're going to revisit, we'll have another discussion. But we should release Carrie. Yes.
I thought that was a great discussion and I was taking notes. Um, and I'm happy to turn around the language. I think for simplicity, I might turn around the language on that one paragraph fairly quickly. And have you review and then you can look at it in its totality. I, if I may, I would like to just say one word about the community engagement piece because we did ask it several times distinctly. Along the path to creating the strategic plan and it was always top of mind for us and um. You know, the, the challenge with doing community engagement well is that it works best when you have a specific question to ask. Sometimes if you want to know how to engage a group most successfully and what do you need and how have the needs of um, you and your peers. Have they changed since the last time we did a strategic planner? How well are our programs working? And because we started to really focus on a different altitude and it wasn't about programmatic and it was about values. Those are yours to name, to articulate, to live. And you know, the thing that we always say at Bridgeport about values is they're not really values until they're hard. Until you'd rather not choose them because it makes it harder for you. It's a little more uncomfortable, you're going to have to have a difficult conversation. And so I just want to offer that as a framing for when you do receive feedback. Just remember that the values are yours. And it's fun, and you know, the conversation about individual and groups I thought was amazing and helpful and. Really informs the way that we'll articulate that in the next round.
Good.
Just be discerning when you get feedback about your values because they're yours.
Thank you.
So, and thank you. I really appreciated this conversation.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Great, so um, we'll keep moving on uh, to old business, but, and then um. Work with staff on how this will be reworked and then reviewed again by the entirety of the board. Right, thank you everyone. That was, that was nicely done. Thank you. Um, okay, moving on to updates on construction projects with Lynn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, Josie mentioned some of this earlier, uh, tray, or Pittsfield, we've received the glass for the two small meeting rooms in the back. We've got electrical work going on this week. Uh, the acoustic baffles are going up in the large meeting room, which is really exciting. We get to see how those look and work. Traver wood, the relabeling is going really well. We're right on schedule. Uh, the. Reading room side of the building, the flooring's been done, shelving's back, material's back on the shelving. We're shifting now to the program side of the room. Um, I think this Thursday and Friday, the workroom and the office in the back are going to get carpeted and painted. Um, so it's going really well. Um, fourth floor, the dust wall is up. We've moved some doors around. And demolition should start really soon, which is kind of the exciting part for some of us. There's a couple of things in that room that are unique to the room that we've had a lot of conversation about, or how is that going to come out of the room? So there's many people in staff that just want to see or have a chance to maybe take some of that out, so.
The curved wall?
The curved wall is number one on the list, but there's a couple of other things, yes.
All right.
So um, everything's uh, on schedule as of now. Um, and hopefully. Uh, we'll have most of the fourth floor demo by March first, is what we're looking like. There's some longer lead times on some of the podcast room. Windows, doors, that type of stuff, but uh, we're really optimistic that's gonna, everything's gonna go smooth. Any questions?
Lynn, you said March first for the demolition. When do we expect to have it up and done and available?
Well, really, we have, we have the room booked in March. So the, the demolition needs to happen, painting. You know, flooring, that type, so just all the finished work should be between now and March first.
He said demolition, but he meant, he meant, you did say demolition would be finished by March first, but.
Yes, no, I'm sorry. Demolition's only going to take about a week or so. That's the easy part, right? And just come in and take everything down. Um, so now demolition should only take about a week or so and then construction itself. For the carpenter's work, uh, moving the lighting. Um, the, the, the biggest part of the job, which we're still having a conversation about, is actually moving some of the sprinkler heads. Um, we need to get a drawing for that so we can get to the fire marshal and have that conversation, but the work itself is just really a few weeks. Um, and then there's some specialty work, the lighting, the HVAC, the, the fire suppression, that type of stuff, so. Um, but we plan on having it and that's what we've, we've asked of the contractors that by March first, we're able to use the space even if we're not complete. So that's our, that's kind of our drop deadline for the fourth floor.
Festival season starts.
Yes.
So that's what we're, all right.
Yeah, I've been, I've been kind of watching the calendar. I had a meeting with our construction manager today. We looked at everything to make sure we were both comfortable with our dates and we were, so. I'm optimistic that, you know, now that we're getting going, we had to go back to plan review for one thing, so it's uh, you know. Slow going, but it's gonna, it's gonna be, I'm, I'm excited about the space early.
We got twenty five events up there in March, so.
Yeah, we have a deadline on this one, so we can't drag our feet. Um, but it really is, the, the actual construction schedule of this is a, is just a few weeks. Now that we're going.
Great. Any questions for Lynn? I will, part of me will miss the, the, the Model UN style of the fourth floor as former secretary general of Model UN. But I'm glad to see it go if it means accommodating more events and more, more, um, more patrons.
Yeah, the more we've talked about it, uh, it, with staff and the, the construction manager, I, the more I'm getting excited about it because it's. We're going to see how we're going to be able to use the space in different ways and it's uh, uh, it's gonna be really nice.
Right, if you find any additional space along the way. Let us, let us know.
All right, thanks guys.
Thank you Lynn. All right, moving on to new business. Um, uh, we've invited uh, Jim Green from Dykema. To cover the role of the board, board bylaws and um, the role of the director, so Jim. Yeah, so this is uh, this is something um, I had, I had, I had asked to, uh, to work with Josie to invite Jim. Because I feel like um, we've got um. Two new elected trustees from the past election last year and then uh, the remainder of us who were elected in two thousand and sixteen. It felt like it was a good time and maybe hopefully an annual tradition to kind of review our roles and responsibilities. If you haven't already tattooed it on your arm. Uh, so along with our vision, mission and values, um, this is a good time to, to. Have this review with our general counsel. So thank you for, for joining us tonight.
Well, thank you for inviting me.
Well, thank you for inviting me. I think I've represented the board now for approximately twenty-five years and, uh, have met many different board members, uh, during that period. Some that had a, um, uh, liked, uh, operating at a very high altitude, and some who liked to operate at a very low altitude. So, I'm, uh, I was very encouraged by the conversation that, uh, preceded, uh, my being up here, uh, and the direction which you're heading on your strategic plan. Of course, uh, that kind of thinking, that kind of direction, um, uh, leaves a lot of room for things to evolve as you go. And the emphasis, um, as you've identified already, is on, um, the strength of the leadership that you, uh, retain and on, uh, communication, openness, and transparency. Because, uh, in your role as board members, if you just look at some of the high-level responsibilities that you have, one of them, uh, clearly is planning for the future. And how you plan for that, uh, future, if not, uh, in advance by virtue of coming to consensus, but one of kind of reacting as we go, um, uh, to the leadership that's brought from the administration, then that is gonna put a great emphasis on how you communicate, um, and how you articulate the needs of the board so that you don't have a fundamental disconnect between where the administration's going, because you've given pretty much a, uh, open field to operate, um, versus what you're feeling, uh, the administration, what direction you feel the administration should be going in. It's exciting, uh, it is innovative based on what I've seen. I've seen a lot of strategic plans and have seen them all being shelved because they are very, very detailed, very prescriptive, very, um, um, operational. And of course, as soon as, um, uh, you draft it, things have changed and, uh, there's a massive disconnect with the plan. So, I like it, I like what I'm hearing, I think it's exciting. And it's clear that, um, this board recognizes that one of its, uh, fundamental, uh, jobs is planning for the future. You spend a lot of time in that strategic plan, talking about your values, your mission, uh, and your, and your role, which is first and foremost, one of your primary responsibilities. Another major responsibility is monitoring, uh, the effectiveness of the organization. Uh, that is everything from budgeting to looking at the financial reporting, um, uh, looking at community satisfaction with the programs that you're offering. Another is advocacy, uh, for the library itself with the community, making sure that you're, uh, in tune with what the community, uh, needs and desires, and that you're articulating that effectively for the benefit of the administration. Another, obviously, uh, and probably one where you spend a fair amount of your time, like most boards, is adopting policies, because it's policies that serve as the foundation, uh, in the guideposts for what the administration does on an ongoing day-to-day basis. And of course, I'd put this at the top of my personal list if I was on the board, and that is hiring and evaluating the director. Because, uh, the director articulates the vision and direction from the board to the staff through all of the programming, uh, uh, that the library, uh, supports. Now, what does the, uh, the director do? The director's responsible for all the day-to-day operational issues. If the board stays focused on policy, vision, mission, strategic planning, um, monitoring the effectiveness of the organization, uh, that's a full plate. The day-to-day management of the operation, direction of the staff, coordination of all the work of the library, uh, is typically that of the director, not the board. What are some of the duties? Well, most of the duties of the director, um, are probably encompassed in a very detailed job description, and I'm sure Josie has one. It's oversight of the budget, preparing reports for the benefit of the board, serving as advisor to the board on not only your, uh, policies, but your finances, your planning, uh, library performance. This, uh, is where the board looks to for its fundamental information, so that you understand how the library's, uh, doing. That information comes through the director. If you can articulate the type of information that you need to give you fundamental comfort, um, she can ensure that that information is forthcoming from the staff, either through the finance director or construction managers and all the other people that support you. She might, manages the library's, uh, collections, uh, for the community, does all the hiring, the training, the supervision, scheduling of staff, uh, supervises circulation of library materials, supervises the maintenance of all facilities, uh, and equipment, works with the board and the community in planning the library services. These are fundamental functions of the director, and the board, on a day-to-day basis, doesn't need to get down into the work of the, um, director. If you stay focused on the, the fundamentals of what a board does, you will be given all of the information that you need to give, um, to the director. Now, what are the ways in which some of these roles, uh, intersect but differ? Let's deal with just a couple. The library director will draft policy. She'll interpret the feedback that she gets from the board, and she'll present it to the board in draft form. It's up to the board, then, to provide feedback and to ultimately adopt a policy. But the role of preparing the drafts, the role of, you know, collecting all that data and information, is that of the director. The board hires in, fundamentally, the board hires and evaluates the director. It's the director who hires and evaluates all the staff of the library, not the board. The board, um, if you're dissatisfied fundamentally with direction that the, uh, uh, is coming through, the director, that's where your communication should be focused. Because that person should then be able to, uh, interpret, uh, your will in, in terms of how staff are compensated, uh, in terms of how staff are, are trained, if they're not trained properly. The director will also prepare a budget for you. But, you know, first and foremost, what goes into that budget? Well, there's a lot of assumptions that go into the preparation of a budget. And that document, that series of financial reports should all be coming up to the board from the, from the director, through her staff. The board gives feedback and the board is ultimately responsible for approving that budget. Now, you've, um, also had on your agenda a little bit, uh, for some comments about the bylaws. I've read through the bylaws again. Uh, it's a pretty detailed instrument, uh, as it should be, because it, uh, it's a governing document. It describes how you're going to do your business. It establishes your organizational structure, describes the roles and responsibilities of your officers, of the director, uh, of your board committees. I noticed that in your, uh, committee structure, you have, we had some dialogue about this a few years ago, as I remember, and you settled in on a, on, on two standing committees, your executive committee and your, um, budget and finance committee, two very basic and important committees. But then you also allowed for the flexibility of appointing a special committee from time to time, such as what you did with your strategic planning. That's all great, and, uh, it should be giving you the, the kind of information, the kind of feedback that you need in order to operate effectively as a board. Of course, you can add, uh, additional committees as, as time permits. But, uh, as I indicated, uh, I think what I've heard and was able to observe in just, uh, the brief interchanges this evening on the strategic planning committee, um, leaves me very, very assured and very confident that the board understands its role, understands and trusts, uh, the role of the director and, uh, uh, and how the two can effectively, uh, support one another. So, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you have, if there's any blurring of lines or something like that, but I'm pretty comfortable overall.
Thank you.
Thank you for, I, I think this is kind of like a, um, health check, I feel like that's the, our annual, bylaws, duties, and just on, and it's really, I think it's, it's really helpful also to, uh, to frame our relationship with Josie, um, and, and also emphasize how we're a governing board, where we, programs happen through Josie and through staff and not through the board. Um, that's, that's, especially as an independent entity, um, I think that's, that's worth reminding now and then, so I, I'm, I'm glad we, we passed our, our, our health assessment.
Things have evolved, uh, a long way from the, uh, the first board. They had a lot, they had a lot. They had a lot of work to do when they, uh, when you were first established.
They had a lot of work to do.
So.
It's also great, Jim, just to hear from you about the long view on all of this because you've really, you've, you've seen it all, so it's pretty, um, it's just great to hear from you at this moment in time as we're kind of pushing into the next.
The next decade.
The next decade of the library.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, uh, moving on, uh, under new business, we have the approval of board meeting dates for 2020.
I would move to approve the board meeting dates for 2020.
Discussion. Oh, great. Discussion.
Yeah, I have a discussion, which I think has come up before.
Yeah.
I know that statistically, we do not hold that August meeting. What's the impact? And what we've done in the past always is we put it on the, um, the calendar and then we remove it when we decide we have no business. I mean, that's, that's the reason in effect that we don't have an August meeting. And I wanted to ask what the impact is, since statistically, we have not had an August board meeting in the last couple of years. What's the impact of doing it the other way, of not canceling it and then deciding we need it? Is that more difficult for us in some way?
I kind of feel like it's better to have it on the calendar, given that, uh, especially since we spent a year in closed session with real estate discussions.
I was gonna say, didn't we actually have the August meeting this year? I think we did.
We did.
Oh, well, forget my comment.
Plus, the other, the other thing that I'll say is rooms here are at such, are in such demand.
Yeah.
This puts it on the calendar, this books the room. It's easier to back out of it than to add it.
Just from space? It's just space.
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, I, I only meant that there can be things that come up, um, it'd be hard to, and I was looking at old, um, board minutes back to two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, I saw, uh, actually, December meetings were voted, were.
Yeah, we often.
So, we've got, we've got flexibility. Is there anything else?
The other thing, this is my annual, I like to say, we are the masters of our own destiny, so if a Monday evening meeting does not make sense for this board as it is right now, it is something we can consider changing, although, of course, it has impact on, like, where we can have the meeting. And it's just worth reminding ourselves that we are the masters of our own destiny. We don't have to do things the way that they've always been done. Um, we can think differently about how we have this meeting to address concerns in the community or our own, um, availability. And I also, this is a different topic, but it might be interesting to think ahead to, you know, if we wanna move the meeting around, and do we have the capacity to do that, given our streaming and all of that, we've, which we have done in the past, but we have not done in a while.
So, just to comment on that, I mean, Monday night works as well for me as any night, but the only thing is competing with the city council, and I, you know, sometimes do wonder about how we have to possibly lose people to that.
I think, um, so in the past couple of years, I've seen folks give comments here and just sprint to city council that it passed last couple of blocks, and where city council has reliably gone longer than our meetings. And it seems like that's a, a longstanding tradition that probably won't change. So, I, I, I don't, I don't know if, um, and then plus, we also welcome comments at the end of, if folks wanna go to city council first, if they've gotten a three-minute slot to speak during public comments, they can, I, I feel like they can, folks can still participate in both, in some capacity, I don't, unless, uh, folks have heard otherwise.
And, no, I agree with you, Lynn, which is why I think it's a theoretical problem, we haven't seen it be an actual problem.
I think these chairs would be full if it wasn't, I'm kidding.
I know. I encourage everyone, especially the teens, to attend city council, so you can get the full breadth of Ann Arbor, Ann Arbor's governance. All right, any other thoughts or discussion on, uh, on this before we, before we vote on our 2020 calendar?
Just that I definitely made Tuesday and Thursday evening commitments based on the Monday.
Yeah.
So, please don't.
Yeah.
I, I personally have no desire to change this, um, but I always say that because I wish someone had said that when I first started on the board. Because I felt powerless to change it.
I think I would never want someone to feel like, that we couldn't change it, that they were silently suffering with some sort of, so it is a good reminder.
Yeah, please do not silently suffer as a trustee, as an elected official.
Well, at least not over the meeting schedule.
Yes, right.
Great, fantastic. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Great, motion passes. Um, moving on to approval of board budget and finance committee appointments. Can I get, uh?
You, you make the appointments.
Yes, I will, so.
And that's it, right?
That's it, there's, there's no motion. So, I gave, uh, a lot of consideration over this, uh, considering that we have new officers, and then also looking at the timing of, uh, of new trustees, uh, and senior trustees who've been on for a while, and just giving folks a chance to participate. And after discussing it with the full board, I'd like to see on the executive committee, myself, President Corinne, Vice President, um, and Secretary Jim, Jim Leahy. So, that makes the three officers, our executive committee. For finance and budgeting, we have Dharma as treasurer. Victoria has agreed to continue to serve on budget and finance, thank you very much. Uh, and we have a new trust, uh, a trustee participating in budget and finance, Jamie Vanderbroek. So, those are the appointments for both committees. All right, Karen, are we okay to?
There's no vote.
Move on, there's, is there a vote?
Says action.
I think the bylaws are.
Did Jim leave?
Does the board approve?
This is, yeah, this is a strange.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, we discussed this before.
Can I get approval of my committee appointments, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. So, we'll just have that exercise in record, so just, I guess, better safer.
Better safer.
Safe than sorry.
And we'll check it, double check it.
Yeah.
If it's in there, we did the right thing, if it's not in there, we didn't do a wrong thing.
I really do hope those committees, please, keep those positions.
Say the president shall preside and appoint committees with the approval of the board.
Great, perfect, okay, fantastic, thank you, thank you for looking that up.
But, I think the, the, the gray area is that we actually don't, we, that's sort of like.
Yeah, what's approval?
The board just allows the president, the president to do that, is, is the approval process.
It's not clear.
Yeah, it's like, it's the gray area.
We should have kept Jim Green here.
That is the tradition of the bylaw, at least.
Um, thank you, Josie, for, for verifying that, Karen, too, thank you. All right, uh, so moving on to, uh, a resolution adopting 2020 strategic plan, so.
I would move to table this resolution to the next board meeting.
Second.
Sorry.
Great, any, any additional discussion? Great, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you, thank you for noting that, Karen. Thank you for noting that, Karen. A resolution authorizing the HVAC replacement for the downtown library.
Let us move first.
Yeah. Can I get a motion?
I would move to award Goat Mechanical with HVAC repairs replacement in the downtown library building in the amount of $99,026, and that all resolutions and parts of resolutions that conflict with the provisions of this resolution are rescinded.
A second. Discussion.
Glenn, would you like to give us the overview?
Yeah, so the work is to replace air handler two, which actually serves this room that we're in now. That's a picture of it. It's from 1975.
Ew. Where exactly is it?
It's in a room not far from here, right down the hallway.
Oh, okay.
If you pan down, there's actually a newer air handler that was put in, and I almost took a picture of it, just as comparison, that was put in when they did the parking structure for Library Lane. They don't look anything alike. So that's, that's been there a while. It does, it serves this space only. The other part of the work is for next door in the secret lab. We're running into an issue in the basement where we've made investments in equipment in the lab, whether it be letterpress or the type, and it's the humidity down here, and we're having a hard time controlling it. So this project is to replace the air handler because the valves on that, which is, it's a hydraulic unit, so heating and cooling come from water. And one of the valves on that's frozen, so it just does what it does. It'll heat, but it won't cool as good as it should, or it doesn't serve the space as well as it could.
That is some black mold up.
No, that's actually rust that we've painted, so it stopped rusting, because that works.
Well, I wanted to check. Maybe painted. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, in the summertime, when that's actually cooling, so you have, you know, basically chilled ice cold water running through that unit, it's just condensating.
Okay.
And that's what causes that. It's, you know, it's warm in that basement, and then you have that, and it's just doing its thing. Next door, it is to put in a mini-split, which will go in a small unit outside, and then it'll have fan heads in the room, so it'll basically have its own environment next door.
Oh, nice.
Except for fresh air. And so there'd be a sensor there that brings in outside air when it needs to be. Other than that, we'll be able to control that environment and get that humidity down probably about 25, 30% in that room.
Wow.
So it'll be.
What is it now?
We've had times it's been about 78%.
Oh, that's not good for.
No, no, it's not. So we did some things over the summer. We got it down around 50, but we weren't able to just, we weren't able to sustain it for a long period of time. We have programs in there, and then it takes days to recover. This unit will take hours to recover.
So let me hear sort of two big things. One, replace an air handler, and two, install a mini-split system specifically to address the needs of the secret lab, which is both about the specific needs, but also people's comfort. I mean, 78% humidity strikes me as too high for anywhere in this building.
It is. Believe it or not, you don't notice the humidity so much. We had a staff member here that was, that worked in the lab when I started working here, and they talked about the temperature a lot. The people in their work there now in the library and that's over the letterpress really addressed it a lot of different ways. And that's where, when the humidity came into it, you don't notice the humidity as much as it's just inconsistent. You know, there's times it's too hot, it's too cold. It's just been hard to keep at a temperature and a humidity. And when you're not thinking about it in the ways of just humidity, you don't, you don't think about it, but it definitely impacts the temperature of the space. So, you know, it's help from staff that helped us kind of pinpoint what the problem was.
Does the new air handler offer us any opportunities for increased energy efficiency?
It, not the unit itself, but the controls, yes. The unit itself is sized by, so that's, it's a six-ton unit replacing a six-ton unit. It is more efficient just because it's 45 years newer. The energy efficiency we have is basically through the controls, the building controls that we have set up. So we have our occupancy about 10:00 at night, our building's actually shut down, you know, and they'll allow it to either get warm enough or cool enough, and they do that thing. All the set points are there. We have been tracking, so Pittsfield, we changed the controls at Pittsfield, I think it's, we're coming up on two years, and to the same controls we're doing downtown. We've, on my, like, regular cold months, we've cut the gas consumption half, just from controls, no new equipment.
That's awesome.
And that's just the programs making the decisions. We tweak it, you know, we play with it, but Pittsfield was using between 6,000 and 7,000 cubic feet of gas a month for it to heat the building. Our last bill that we just looked at for December was 2,800.
Wow. Congratulations.
Well, it was a cool, it wasn't a terrible December either, so the temperature helped, but it's still a lot lower than what it was. And we've done the same thing at Traversewood. We've seen a similar thing at Traversewood, but at Traversewood, it's actually less energy, electric consumption, not gas. So each building's unique, but yes, this will be much more efficient, but it's more about how we program it with the control, building controls versus the equipment themselves.
Where you get bigger bang for buck there.
Yeah, because a mechanical engineer's gonna say, you need this many tons of cooling, this many BTUs of heating, or this many cubic feet of air. And from there, it's all building controls.
And then a second question I have is the new mini-split system that would be installed, do we have multiple options at multiple price points, which have a different carbon impact?
We spec the same, I had all the contractors that bid it, we spec the same unit, because we didn't want to have someone pricing, basically pricing out a cheaper unit that, we priced out of Mitsubishi that we're comfortable with, that is a reliable, efficient system. And on the cooling side of it, it's a SEER rating, and it's usually, and it's all technical terms, but 12 is the lowest end, 21 is the high end. And I think there's an, it's an acronym, obviously, I think it's a energy efficiency ratio. These are all between 12 and 14. So they're as low as they can be for what we could buy commercially.
Are there more efficient items that are available? I mean, I guess one question I have is, can we, you know, you're asking us, I mean, it's our decision about how much money we spend in effect, and is there an option that you guys put off the table, because you said, I think that's more money than the board will want to spend?
The only option that we took off the table, and it was based on money, was a Liebert, is what the manufacturer is. It's for server rooms. It wasn't because it was more or less efficient, it was because it wasn't ideal for the space.
I see. So you're saying there isn't a decision for the board to make where we spend more money and get a different energy efficiency?
No, they're, like I said, we had a Liebert unit priced out that was probably 40% more than this unit, but it's not, that's something you're gonna see in a server room or an IT closet or something like that, and it's not, it's more circulating air versus, this is definitely working inside, outside, and with the house system. The most efficient for, it would be the thermal, thermal heating and cooling. We don't have space for that.
Right. And this project is not of that scale to do that?
No, well, yeah, I mean, it's, I think we would entertain it if we had, but you have to have space outside for wells and all that, and we just don't have that space.
So I've been monopolizing your time.
No, it's good.
No, no. Is this, is this something that we had anticipated in our building assessment?
Yeah, the reserve study we did with O'Neil, this was, the air handler two was part of that. The reason we packaged them together, because we've actually been working on this for most of this year. We wanted to replace air handler two, and it served both rooms. But we couldn't do that because of demolition, the pipe, or the duct sizing, it just wasn't gonna allow it. We'd have to double the duct size in and out of here, and there's not the ceiling space. We'd have to lower ceilings and quite a bit of work, but that was our first approach, was can we just replace this and have it serve the whole basement? And it turned out that was just too costly.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other additional questions for Lynn? Thank you for, thank you for the picture.
Everyone a tour. That is not black mold.
Well, when you say air handlers, I mean.
I know.
So this is, this is very helpful. Thank you. Great. So moving on, we need to vote on this resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Great. Fantastic. Let's see where we are.
I would like to move to vote for closed session at the February 2020 regular board meeting for discussion of real estate and opinion of council.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Great. All those in favor?
Roll call.
Oops, sorry, roll call, that's right.
Roll call.
Oh, right. Dharma, Akbar.
Yes.
Were you agreeing?
Yes.
Leahy.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
And Sauce.
Yes.
Give me a better look.
Yes. Great. Thank you. And now we're ending, we're near the end. Citizens comments? We have, we have someone?
Comments? I have one at this point. Dave.
Dave.
Come on up. You're the, you're our first comment of the new year.
Hi. Happy New Year and decade. I missed part of the discussion.
Your attention, please. The library will close in five minutes. If you have materials to check out, just go to a self-check station or to the circulation desk now. Thank you.
I was saying, I missed part of the early discussion, but I caught on when discussing the strategic plan, page five, which had the one paragraph with a lot of focus. My eyes drifted down to the paragraph below it that starts prioritizing patron privacy, and that led me to recollect that various individuals may have a harder time providing comments than others. And to my knowledge, the comments on the website says, if you remain anonymous, you won't get a response, and comments here as well have to be done in person. So there are many demographics, many individuals who might be discouraged from commenting just because if you don't get a response, they ask, oh, is somebody gonna read it? But also for other reasons, they may not be able to comment safely. And so just wanted to mention that. It was not the point of the paragraph, but that's what triggered it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments for folks? All right. Thank you very much, Dave, for starting us off, and I think we're at the term. Thank you. That's the end of our meeting.
Bravo.
All right.